We do have quorum, so we're ready to go. Got a lot of little announcements here first to start with. It's gonna be a very busy meeting, a lot of things to talk about. Just just remember there's time limits on each one of your talks, okay? Okay, so let's start with special consideration. Rules of participation, anyone wishing to speak, please raise your hand. After recognition, address your comments to the chair of me. Comments must be must read, excuse me. Comments must relate to the pending agenda. High board rules, audience and board members can have up to two, two minute talk terms to speak on a topic. Those speaking should be concise and limit comments to two, two minutes. Those giving reports should limit their reports to three, three minutes, five, five minute presentations. Please silence all electronics, electronic phones. This board may take action on any agenda, any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law. Specific issues not listed on this agenda cannot be voted on. That's properly added to the agenda by two thirty twelve. So now I'm calling the order at six. Okay. Six thirty three. Okay, we got a roll call going.
When you say your name, please say it here. Lindsay. Knowlton. Nope. Judy. Okay, she's here. Louis.
Here.
Okay. Uh, Michelle. Yep. Get Wookiee.
Present.
Okay. Okay. Pollard. Pollard.
Here.
Uh, Morgan.
Here.
Uh, Mohammed. Okay, he's not here. Solis.
Here.
Paul.
Okay, we're in there, we're, hello, 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 hello. Uh, we'll start with Honolulu Fire Department. There you go. And by the way, if you have anything to say and want to talk, that's where you have to go to the mic part then. So raise your hand, walk over there.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Uh, I'm Keith Endel, I'm the fire captain on engine twenty nine from, from the Macaulay Fire Station. Uh, they all get, or, um, the incident statics for us. Uh, the number runs for July where we had two structured fires in our first scenario, uh, we had six nuisance fires, one cooking fire and four activated alarms. Um, the medical side, we had a hundred and eleven alarms and seven vehicle collisions. The August fire safety tip for the month is back to school fire safety. So educating students on what they can do to stay safe during the school year is important and, and often overlooked. Uh, college students living away from home should take a few minutes to ensure they are living in a fire safe environment. Things that we can suggest is to not overload any outlets, keep lamps, light fixtures and light bulbs away from anything that can burn. Uh, never use an extension cord with large appliances like a refrigerator. So basically those should be plugged into a wall. Uh, cook only when it, uh, cook only where it is allowed. Keep the cooking area clean and free of anything that can burn. If a fire starts in a microwave, keep the door closed and unplug the unit. And if a disaster happens, knowing who to call and where to meet is an important part of emergency planning for you and your family. Pick one main contact locally and one contact out of town who may be easier to reach during a disaster. So that's the August fire safety tip for the month.
Okay, anybody on the board have any questions for fire department? Anybody in the audience, anybody have any questions? One. But we have to report all this stuff.
Yes.
Yes.
I wanted to ask how many collisions, oh, sorry, where the collisions were exactly? If you have that information and how often collisions happen in that area? And maybe even within a span of five years, we, would you be able to pull up those kind of numbers? Okay. So, um, I'll take this question now and I, the, or these questions are, are in the kind of collisions, yeah, um, frequency and within maybe five years. Thank you.
Uh, for a little while now, just try to a little bit louder. Uh, because we have technical difficulties, okay?
Okay.
It doesn't. Yeah. Okay. How about now, can you hear me now? Better, okay. Alrighty, so anyhow, speak up because we can't hear anybody. Right? Anybody else have any questions for our fire department? No, thank you very much. That'll teach you guys. Okay. Next. We have the Honolulu Police Department, we'll go with District One.
Good evening, Chair everybody.
One.
Yeah, good evening, Chair everybody, board members and everyone in attendance. Lieutenant Seguso from Honolulu Police Department, District One, Community Responsibility. I know you guys' time is very precious, so I'm gonna get right into the stats.
Actually, um, oh. Wait, can we hear it? Hello?
Can you guys hear me? Can you guys hear me now? Hello, hello?
We chat. Can we hear?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, um, can you? Yes, uh.
Check, check, one, two, one, two, test, 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 one, two, one, two. One, two. Check, 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 check. Okay, try it now, please.
Okay. Officer?
Okay. Get right into the stats, I know you guys' time is very precious, so motor vehicle thefts for July were five. Um, the previous month was one. Burglaries were three, previous to that was two. Thefts were eight, uh, slightly up from the previous month from four. U M Vs or car break-ins were three, previous month was two. Assaults were three, uh, previous was four, sex assaults were zero, previous month was two. Uh, there were no graffiti cases for both months and also for drug cases. Total cost for service for your particular area, everything west of Haoli Street was three hundred and eighty compared to the previous month of four hundred and fifty one. There are no criminal breaches to report at this time for the District One area community responsibility. Uh, so District One, uh, we're continue, still continuing the battle with R C P issues in the area of Kalakaua King and Poal Park. I just wanted to commend Corporal Kai Mikellet and Sergeant Sean Kavako from the D one Bike Detail uh, for working very well together hand in hand with the C D D F M S P O S N O crews. Uh, I just wanted to also touch bases on two, uh, events for the month of August that are coming up. So on August or this coming Saturday, uh, there's gonna be a Korean festival at Kakaako, uh, Maoka Guardian Park Grounds from ten to six. Uh, so, and the other event that we're gonna talk about is kind of affecting your particular area is gonna be the Pokemon World Championship. Uh, it's gonna be on August fifteenth, seventeenth and the eighteenth. And it's gonna be at the convention center, expect heavier traffic and pedestrian activity in the area. Uh, supposedly there's gonna be some drone shows, uh, in the early evening and that is gonna cause some traffic in the area. Uh, so, uh, with the next week, uh, Monday, August fifth, um, it's gonna be back to school for about eighty percent of the schools in, in Honolulu. Uh, so leave early, avoid major traffic so you can avoid major traffic tie-ups, um, expect heavier traffic during peak traffic hours uh, for the entire month of August. Uh, so that leads us into the safety tip of the month of, of August would be traffic and pedestrian safety. Uh, we're gonna be asking our drivers to slow down, you know, check your blind spots twice and leave earlier, uh, to avoid any type of uh, we're gonna ask our community members, uh, especially the pedestrians to make eye contact with drivers when crossing the street. Uh, have your head on a swivel while you're in the roadway and be very predictable so that drivers understand what you're doing in the road. Other than that, I'm gonna yield back the rest of my times, I can take any questions from the board members and public attendees.
I just have one quick question for you. The sweeps that we do, um, the sweeps that we do at the parks and any place, how much do they cost? Are they expensive? And do we interview the homeless people as we're telling them, sorry, you guys have to leave?
That, that's a very good, that's a very good question, Chair, um, Chair everybody. So, um, if you guys wanna take a look at it, um, there's, um, Supreme Court, um, decision in regards to Grants Pass, um, versus, um, I think it was Lincoln, I'm not uh, Grants Pass and, and Oregon City, uh, in, in regards to that sit lie, it kind of affects our sit lie laws and stuff like that. Uh, in regards to the expense, uh, I would, I would assume so because, um, usually we have about maybe eight to ten officers working uh, in regards to those, um, sweeps. Uh, we also utilize some patrol officers to assist them, um, when we do need to make arrests or do have to transport, um, people. Um, we, we're obligated, um, you know, by statute to double check that there is shelter. Uh, there's, um, beds available prior to us issuing any type of citations or, um, doing any type of arrest. So we also coordinate our efforts with I H S and, uh, Honu, other, um, and also Care Core also. Um, we also, um, you know, that they're, they're, they're involved in the whole process, yeah, before we do those cleanups.
Hey, thank you. Anybody on the board have anything, any questions? Board, nobody? Okay, anybody in the audience? Go ahead.
Okay, good evening, officer, good evening, board members and everybody here. Um, I wanted to, to bring up a couple of things that I, I, um, took notes on since our last meeting. I, um, last meeting, I, I requested that H P D do us maybe, uh, uh, I don't know what it was, a speed check on Date Street because we've been having a lot of issues with excessive speeding on Date Street and I believe somebody from the board brought it up too last time. Right? Further down on Date Street. So anyway, um, about a week after, we had a, we had a car accident involving a drunk driver on Houston Street, flying down Date Street drunk, smashed into a car, coming out of, coming out of, uh, Houston Street, attempting to cross over and, and I guess the drunk driver attempted to flee. So that was about a week later. Um, car, from my understanding, on the driver's side was pretty totaled. And then, um, let's see. Uh, on June twenty eighth, we had an accident fronting my house, uh, involved, uh, um, I think it was a moving, it was a U-Haul truck or something, it was, it was a vehicle that was towing a, a, a trailer with tools on it. Apparently the guy was flying down Date Street and hit, hit somebody, anyway, long story short, the car flipped over that got hit by the truck, flipped over and uh, then ended up from Date Street into Coolidge Street overturned. Um, and it also took out a telephone pole as well, the, uh, the, uh, the truck did. So that was another incident of speeding on our street and the speeding continues daily on our street. I, I did receive an email the other day from Logan Hutchinson on the twenty sixth saying that they did, two officers did set up a, um, uh, observation, two different occasion. They, they, they observed nobody speeding on Date Street, which I found kind of hard to believe, to be honest with you. Because I can go standing outside my house and within three, four minutes, somebody comes flying down our street. And I'm not trying to take away from H P D's hard work, I appreciate everything you guys are doing there for our community and everything. Another thing I have to bring up is over by Stadium Park. On Monday, I was walking by Stadium Park, there was a white Mercedes Benz parked in front of the old Bollardrome near the gate, the old, old entry gate. Door was wide open, the windows were smashed, I called H P D, reported it. Um, it was a smash and grab, whatever was in the car, but when I opened, when I, not opened, but when I, when I peeked into the car, it, not only did they, they take whatever was in the car and smash the windows, they also destroyed the interior of that guy's Mercedes Benz. And so it wasn't, it wasn't, um, something that was just a simple smash and grab. Um, you said that there was three on your report, I'm pretty sure that, um, maybe this guy didn't report it or something, maybe there was more because since our last meeting two months ago, count five break-ins on Eisenberg Street, right? Parking on Eisenberg in front of Stadium Park. So we've had numerous break-ins and also, I, I'm not sure, I'm sorry for the, the, the long, the long speech here, but uh, there was also a motorcycle that was set on fire on Eisenberg Street and the ground is still, it melted the, the tarmac there, the, the asphalt. So there's, there's kind of like a big warp in the ground there. Um, that's another issue that we're having and there's continues to be crazy stuff going on, like the other day, I was just yesterday, I was driving down King Street, passing Stadium Park and this guy ran out into the middle of the road, half naked and he was, he, he didn't even have any regard for what was going on in traffic. He was in the middle of afternoon traffic and he dashed out into the road, almost got hit by numerous cars. And when you, if you pass by Stadium Park, it's, it's, it's a, it's madness over there. You know, that face is just a, it's just a for all kinds of drug activity or whatever's going on over there. So I was wondering what, what we're gonna start doing about that, that episode there, maybe you guys can set up a bait car or something and help curb the, uh, break-ins on that street because uh, I'm sure eventually they're gonna move over into our, our street, which is Coolidge Street, which is where I live. And as far as H P D is concerned, that's what, that's all I have, thank you.
Just to add one more thing on there, over by the, uh, Bollardrome, there are three cars that that people are living out of, like a family, you know? And, uh, somebody from that neighborhood asked me to ask you guys, is there anything you can do about that?
Okay, in regards to those, um, uh, locations, Chair, but I'm gonna have to defer that to, um, the District Seven Lieutenant Thompson. Um, that's his particular area, I, I pretty much am control over the, uh, locations west of Haoli Street, yeah. But in regards to like the speeding, speeding is, um, also an issue for us also in the one area, so we're sending more officers to the LiDAR training, which is the new, um, speeding lasers. Uh, so we have a, a training for that tomorrow and we're sending several officers. So the more we get these officers equipped with the LiDAR equipment, um, I think we can start, um, you know, getting into these particular areas and addressing the speeding, but, um, just like I said, the rest of those locations and questions, I'm gonna have to defer to Lieutenant Thompson.
Okay, thank you. Anybody, go ahead.
Oh, got a few more questions, um, a lot has to do with speeding as, um, Brent Merrill said. Uh, but is all that stuff, break-ins and all that, it's happening on the other side of, uh, Eisenberg, which is on, uh, Lime Pawnee burn as well. Uh, what are you guys thinking about doing or is there any kind of, oh, thought process of what, how are you gonna curb any of this? Back in the the prior chief, uh, Ballard, somebody requested that we increase, uh, what do you call that? H P D presence in Macaulay. That was denied. But why? Because Macaulay is probably the worst place, it's been the worst place for the past twenty years that I've lived there, twenty plus years and it's been worse before I lived there because I'd seen everything on the news, talking about the same thing that's been happening all the way up until now. It concerns me, I'm pretty sure it concerns everybody over here. Homelessness increase, I want to take my dog around the park where, um, Stadium Park, human feces. That smells great. Walking my dogs past all of that stuff, just think of people with families that are gonna be doing that. I mean, what's, what's the plan here? Does anybody, has anybody created a plan? Because I haven't seen anything for the past twenty years, twenty plus years. Is it a, is it a tough thing? I'm pretty sure it is, but twenty plus year, years, maybe forty years, still a problem. Thank you.
Uh, Mike, you wanna fill that question, sir, sorry.
Yeah, so, as far as Stadium Park and Macaulay area, we have the most officers assigned in the District Two Macaulay area. There are six permanent officers assigned every day. Um, along with projects that go on at various times of the day, there's two or three projects that go on where officers come in and they do, um, uh, projects in Stadium Park, uh, Mulley Leany Field, and the areas of Date Street, uh, like under the bridges and stuff, that's, that's constantly every day. Um, it can be an uphill battle at times, but there are times I drive through, I know where they did a job where it's, it's completely cleaned out and it stays that lightweight for a little while. Um, and we continue to work on it. We, we don't, we haven't given up on Macaulay area, but we just, we continue to work on it constantly. Um, Date Street speeding, uh, we did have a project on that. I don't have the stats for that right now, but I can, can, I can direct my officers to continue to look for speeding during the daytime and, um, let the night watch guys know to look for it as well. But I can give you this, so I have stats for the east side of Haoli Street. So for motor vehicle thefts for the month of July, there's eighteen. Uh, six burglaries, eleven thefts and eleven auto, um, U M Vs or break-in, car break-ins. And total calls for service for that area for the month of six thousand four hundred and twelve. And for, for our safety tip of the month, uh, fake jewelry scam has been a big, big item in the news and in, uh, social media. Uh, Crime Stoppers released a grid, put out a, a release. There have been numerous reports and sightings of individuals approaching people, uh, various parts of the island, including, um, District Seven area, asking if they like to buy jewelry, they oftentimes have a sob story of being robbed or, um, they need money and they were, they wanna sell the jewelry for a discounted price. Um, they'll often, they often approach senior citizens, so uh, please let your capone and all, your family and friends know that they're, they're out there, a lot of people know about them, but there's still a lot of people who don't and then they become victims of these scams. And if there's anything that seems suspicious, please call nine one one and advice is just buy, don't buy jewelry from strangers on the street, um, get them through reputable dealers and stores. And then if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, we're gonna start.
Hi, my name is Allison Peterson, I'm kind of dovetailing on the two previous speakers. I have a question, it's about, um, on my way here, just around the corner, I almost like ran over this guy who was obviously under some kind of influence and he looked to be like homeless and I'm kind of wondering if you have any statistics about, you know, the the pedestrian and bicycle accidents that happen, are they are a lot of them or some of them, you know, having to do with homeless people that, you know, I, I, this is not the first time that it's happened where somebody is just walking right out on the green and you just can't do anything about it.
Um, I don't, I don't have any statistics at the time for that, it doesn't, I don't hear a lot of that happening. Although, although they come into the streets, I don't hear a lot of it where they, they get hit and stuff like that. More so than a normal you know, collisions that happen.
But have you had complaints that they are doing that, just coming right out into the street, not paying any attention to uh, whatever the cross signs are?
Yes, we do get calls on that. And if you see it, please, please call.
Wait, one second. Okay. What? Tom?
Oh. Okay.
Tom.
All right, thank you, Chair. Uh, I just wanted to report something, uh, really to, uh, both Lieutenant Seguso and Lieutenant Thompson. Uh, this is a different perspective. Uh, I received a phone call both yesterday and today, uh, from a constituent who especially, uh, was very concerned and, and I had to ask a few questions to make sure I had this straight, very concerned about the treatment being received by H P D officers at the main station, Baritania Street. This is an individual that apparently is there quite often with the support of H P D, not under arrest or anything else. Uh, but she was very concerned by a couple of incidents very recently, so that she called me at, uh, Representative Bilani's office in terms of literally, what can I do to help support the H P D officers receiving this type of treatment? So I wanted to pass that on to you because her question was basically, are there appropriate laws already in place? I suggested assault or harassment or things like that might cover it. But I wanted to report that to you in this open meeting because, um, it's highly unusual to want to very much support the officers who are taking abusive treatment and the couple of instances you reported were in fact in the headquarters while the individual was being processed or whatever. Um, so, uh, I'll be passing that on to Representative Bilani and also to other contacts, uh, in leadership at H P D. Uh, but wanted to pass that on to both of you because it was very unusual, uh, and very appreciated. Uh, uh, so that, that, that's the point. Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, uh, Morgan?
Good evening, I guess this question may be answered by whomever feels like they know the answer to this, but I just wanted to ask you officers because this is where I went to first to solve this issue. Um, I was recently in a park in Kakaako and I saw two saws that were under a tree and they were just hanging out there and I did not know what to do about them, I didn't really wanna throw them in the trash because I felt like someone was just gonna pull them out and use them, um, and so I ended up calling and the police officers came, who came, said that that was not their responsibility to handle this. Um, so then I was not sure exactly who I should go to, this was the day before July fourth, so Parks and Rec had already closed for the day and I don't think they were gonna reopen till, I don't know, thirty-six hours or there from now. So anyway, I just am curious about what steps you would have recommended that I take. Um, obviously I could have put them in the trash, I recognize that. Um, but again, I didn't want someone to just immediately pull them out and the park that I was at was a place where there's a lot of like people who play with their dogs and people play on the grass and so forth. Okay, thank you.
I think I'll fill that question, um, since it was Kakaako. So in regards to that, ma'am, so, um, a lot of, um, items get left behind in the park, yeah? Um, but just realize this, I think we're, um, bound by statute that we, uh, we as law enforcement officers or H P D officers, we cannot remove any, uh, even trash out of the park, yeah? That, 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 that's only meant for, um, city and county, uh, Parks and Recs to utilize or to, to take away the trash and stuff like that. Now, if it was a dangerous weapon or an instrument like a, let's say it was a sword or if it was something that, um, could cause a public safety issue, like if a kid picked it up, um, could they cut themselves or whatever? Then we, we would have the ability to remove, remove it, um, dispose of it if need be or, um, turn it in as farm property into our evidence. So you did the right thing by calling us.
Okay, so you think that a saw falls on the more like, I don't know, tool, yard tool realm of things? That was the other thing that I felt like I was talking past with the officers on where to me is, I was like, a saw is a knife and I think they were thinking of a saw as a rake type of situation.
Uh, just wanted some clarification, a kind of like, um, like a handsaw or an electrical saw, sorry?
Like a tree saw, like a handsaw, yeah.
Oh, um, yeah, we, we, in that regard, um, I, I don't know exactly what the officers were thinking in, in regards to that, but, you know, it could have been left behind by one of the people that worked there who trimmed the trees, so they might have left it, but I'll, I'll speak with my officers, you know what date that was about? When that incident happened?
Um, it happened on July third.
Okay. I'll go speak with them and see. Absolutely.
Very much.
Yeah. Friend? Okay, uh, my, my statement, I guess, if it is, goes to, uh, Lieutenant Thompson. Um, so I, I heard
Um, so I, I heard you mention, um, that you guys also do bridge cleanups. Is that correct what I heard? So I just wanted. Pardon?
Uh, under the bridges, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, um. I think it was earlier this month or the end of June, or earlier July, end of June. Um, there's a, there's a bridge, a little bridge that's running along Date Street between. Twenty-three forty-one and six sixty-four on the Mackay side of Date Street. Um, I, we observed, my neighbors and I observed a homeless guy. Going in there at night, daytime, whatever, and hauling all this stuff, oh, and I, they, they notified me and I went over there and looked and there was a whole bunch of trash. Uh, inside the canal. Um, along, along the front of the bridge, along the, the telephone pole next to it, along the, you know, the walls and all that, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, so I took it upon myself when I saw another neighbor. That was down there, he, he jumped down into the stream and he started pulling out all the garbage, so I went back up to my house, put gloves on. Put some work, work, uh, gear on and I bought a couple of garbage bags down and we hauled out all the stuff that was in there. I took it and I dumped it in the dumpster at my, my apartment. Also, while I was under there. Uh, I was pretty much grabbing everything in the beginning and throwing it in the garbage bags, you know, taking everything apart, whatever was, you know, needed to be dismantled, blah, blah, blah. Um, when I jumped down into the river underneath the bridge, this guy had. Garden bench, he had his pillow on there, he had it, he had it set up above the waterline, and then he had all kinds of, you know. Whatever, whatever he had going on under there. And so I took the bench out, he and I carried the bench because that thing weighed a ton. So we got the thing out, up and over the bridge, and I went home, got my hammer and my, and my, my snippers, dismantled that thing to pieces, broke it all up. And threw that in the dumpster as well, uh, and upon doing that, we discovered paraphernalia, metha- a methamphetamine, fentanyl pipe. Paraphernalia that goes along with that whole thing, took that thing, crushed it all up and made sure that that thing was dismantled and.
Okay, wrap that one up now.
Yep, so that's all I wanted to add to that.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Good job. Hey Louis?
Hi there, hi Chair.
Hi there.
Hey, I just wanted to make a mention that on August sixth, the. Um, homeless, state homeless coordinator, John Mizuno, and the city. Homeless coordinator, which is Sam, is gonna be at the Y nine neighborhood board because homelessness on the Y nine coast is just wild, right? And so I was thinking that rather than have the conversation with the officers, who I really respect, that they're just doing their job and trying to make it happen. We should hear from the people who are actually coordinating the homeless um, projects and making things work in our community. So it might be advantageous to uh, invite uh, Mr. Mizuno and um, Sam from um. The city to come in and have the conversation with our community because you'll get a lot, not, not better answers, they're just here to enforce, you know? You'll get a lot better information from them.
Sorry to interrupt you. They're here. The people you're talking about at here right now. They'll be talking very shortly.
Oh, perfect, maybe we can save those questions for them. Thank you Chair.
There you go, there you go. Okay. Next. Come on up, come on up to the mic.
Anyway, um, I've been calling the police over and over, more than ten times, you probably know. That I've been using nine one one a lot for illegally park cars and also people not. Not informed, abiding by the signs, no parking anytime, no parking, tollway zone, especially in front of the spot and on uh, Date Street. Date and Houston. So I've called like more than, I'd say fifty times, and still they're parking there. So my question is. Why are they still parking there? Are you enforcing it and why don't you tow away the car? If they're going to keep doing it, why don't you tow away their cars? You're just kinda giving them like a warning, but they're, they're not listening, so I suggest either put more signage and tow away their car.
Right?
Right?
I, I will have them check in, Data and Houston?
It is on Data and Houston, the corner, I don't know, I forgot the address, and then also um, in front of the spot. It's a tollway zone as well. And that guy, all the restaurant people that go to the restaurant, they park there, but people who are coming home on King Street and turning down to Houston. Cannot use that lane, and when you're coming out of Houston, you can't see to the left because the cars are blocking the view.
I'll, I'll have the officers make checks on that.
Oh, I already called them fifty times and I already talked to uh, Major Ogata the other night. For one hour, and previously Brian Lynch, Major Brian Lynch, so I wanna know why it's taking that many phone calls to get something done. Why isn't it cleared? Why isn't our sidewalks clear too? We don't have a designated sidewalk, but it only takes a sign to put there so that people can have a designated sidewalk. And the other people, the other people should park within, um. But why is it taking so long? I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to Andy Sugg, I've talked to so many people. Why does it take so long for anything to happen? That's my question. Nobody should have to call, nobody should have to call that many times to get answers. And I've been on the phone with nine one one and they put me on hold for sometimes thirty minutes or more. I wanna know why it takes so long to do something.
As far as signage, we don't, we don't, we don't put up signage, it's done by the city. Um, if you, if you do see a violation, please call and we can.
I have called more than fifty times. So I'm just saying, why does it take that many phone calls to get somebody to either tow away the car? Or give them like a big fine, not like twenty-five dollars, maybe five hundred dollars, then maybe they'll listen.
Okay, we gotta move on. Consider, yeah. Okay, thank you John. Anybody else? Anybody? Going once, twice, thank you very much, officers. Okay, next. Right now, we're gonna, filling vacancies. We have one person that's wanting to be on the board. So he needs to come up. No, it's not really. Gentlemen's going, wants to be on the board, so we're swearing him in now. The board will vote.
Yeah.
All asked you to show his license.
They're just checking right now, right?
Yeah. And that. Yeah, are you gonna, can I bring out your parking?
Right, right now, we're checking his residency and getting ready to swear him in. He's gonna, he's gonna go on to the board. And we're gonna, we're gonna.
Just not gonna even like. I think he just did this vote. Oh, okay. Yeah.
The company's covering with a girl. Well, sorry.
I don't.
Okay, we're moving on, uh, we didn't have, uh, we didn't have the. You didn't have a, a bill or something? So we couldn't do it. Okay.
I have definitely thought that. Is it, you know, compared to like. And it'll be a.
Okay, just, um, just give us a little second here. Um, we have to do the, uh. Filling the, uh, the, uh. The election of officers, and we start with. The Chair, right? They should be able to hear us. Yeah. Lewis and Wookiee, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
Turn on the cameras for us. There you go. And who's, uh, okay. Yeah.
It's Chair.
Do you want me to be the Chair or just have to nominate or whatever?
I nominate.
You do?
Sure.
Okay.
I got a favor.
Um, we're just nominating a new Chair or the old Chair. Yes, I will. This is, uh, we're just getting new, um. We're nominating new officers, um, and what happens is only the board does that, um. Um. People that wanna do it, Morgan wants to be, be new Chair. So do I, but, but it's all up to the board to. Put in their nomination.
Want to call in your name, uh, play, say Paul or Morgan, okay? For, this is for the Chair position. Okay, um. Judy? Okay, uh, she votes for Paul. Uh, Louis?
Paul.
Okay, uh. Wookiee?
Um, Morgan.
Morgan? Yep. Uh, caller? Morgan? Okay, uh, Christopher? And Paul? Uh, Mohammed, are you here? This thing's not here. Okay, that, three and four, that, it's, we have to make seven in order to. Yeah. It just has to be seven, to make four in order to. For the chair, seven. Or seven for.
So you're saying we get to four elections unless we have.
Someone has to at least have seven. Yeah. Yeah, form is seven. And it's only seven that voted, need.
Oh dear.
Uh, Lindsay, and we have one vacancy, uh, Moltan, Michelle. Mohammed. And we have another vacancies. There's enough to do, for us to do a vote, but there's not, has to be, yeah, it has to be online or here. Uh, just, uh, you'll be pro ten. Or if you want to do another recount, we, hopefully. Okay, next month, okay.
Okay, so what we decided was, I'll be on Chair this month, next month, we do a new vote.
Pro ten Chair. Uh, no, we're doing, we're also doing for. Uh, Secretary, but we still have to do that one by one still. So we have for Vice Chair, so. Does anyone wants to be Vice Chair? Or anyone else, or just a?
With Chris also.
Okay. There's no one else, so I'll just do the roll call vote. Okay, uh, Judy? Oh wait, this is for the Vice Chair position. Uh, for Chris. Everybody, when I say your name, please say Chris, if you want to. Want her, or, yeah, I want him to be part of the Vice Chair. Okay, uh, Judy? Louis?
Chris.
Wookiee?
Chris.
Uh, caller? Morgan? Christopher? And Paul? Okay, uh. Oh, oh wait, oh, so who, who, who? Mohammed, you're here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, so sorry then, uh, Mohammed?
Yes.
Okay, Chris, okay. Okay, that makes eight votes. Uh, he is now Vice Chair. Now we have to do the Secretary position.
First, we have to see if anybody wants to be the Secretary.
If we don't get any, we can.
Okay, anybody wanna be Secretary? Nobody? Next month, post one until next month also, Treasurer? Wants to deal with money? Next month.
Okay.
And, uh, that's all we got. So those things will have to wait till next month.
Yep.
Morgan and I'll be fighting the whole month. Alrighty, thank you for putting up with that. Okay, next. Uh, to termination and reset schedule. I think we should wait for that also next month.
Okay.
Because we don't have full. Group. Now comes the first, okay, the feast. We have, uh. You help feast, folks here? I can't, I can't. It's not what I do. That's weird. So there, how about there? How about there? Thank you. Not me. Okay. So we have. Yeah. Nick called me and said, I'm going to be here. Okay. Next, we'll go right past them. Update on houselessness, John Mizuno. John? Not here. Wow. That's. He knew he was, believe me. Um, next. Next, we have update on. Sam Moku. See, there is, I tell you. He knows.
The main event.
Okay, you got five minutes now, yeah?
Uh, well. First, thank you. I, I'm here. I did ask John to come with me. I, I'm not sure what happened, but John and I work together. Okay? And what's happening on the homeless front? Is stuff that is unprecedented. So in the past, I worked for the city in the past under other administrations, but this administration and the governor. Are working together because the money at the city level is, is not enough to build enough shelters. Let's put it that way. The city and the, the state has invested in homelessness. The governor has invested in homelessness. And the Kahalas that you see that are gonna be springing up very soon and some that are already existing. Are being funded by the state. The city has purchased property like Waikiki Vista. Waikiki Vista, part of, uh, four floors are, is a family shelter. Four floors that are being run by Catholic charities. We also purchased the First Hawaiian Bank right across from Ala Park. That just, I just turned that into a medical respite. Which is a very important part of the whole spectrum. Of shelters that need to be available, so. I'm a staff by myself. But. Part of my team. Is Core. And Core is important, uh, for, for, for me and, and this city because they help us. With bringing homeless to various shelters or getting help. Now, they're building up, they're gonna get larger, they're gonna hire more, and they're doing a great job right now, so. Utilize Core. This is John right here. Don't call John, call Core. But. What we, what, what we're trying to do at the city is utilize. The funds that are coming with, coming from the state to build more shelters, because. The only way we're gonna, you know, we cannot be sweeping everybody and they're just gonna move to another location. Okay, so, I mean. And I'm not a part of the whole, like, when they sweep, this is. The sweeps or the removal of homeless on the sidewalks is not under my purview. Because that is not, that, that is an ordinance that's being. Right, enforced, okay? The sidewalk nuisance, uh, ordinance and the, uh, the storage ordinance, so. That is done, is coordinated by facility maintenance, but they only have a team of two. That does the entire island. Okay, so. Yes, they, they basically go around the entire, entire island in order to do. The cleanups like. Right over here. Who, when you do that next time, if you do that next time. We, I go have somebody bring the dumpster over, you know? But at the same time. My job is to build more shelters for homeless and it's, and what we call it is. Different flavors of shelter. Because not one size fits all. You know, there's a lot of cupones out there that we're, we're, we're trying to help. There's families with kids and I wanna know exactly where on Coolidge Street where that family is, because I wanna get them help. Because when you mentioned that, that. I wanna go find out who they are so that we can get them help. The bad actors you see on the street, the one that Joanne always talks about. Right? The drug addicted, the mentally ill, there are shelters. In Evillea. For that. Okay, we, we do have, no, not we, but nonprofits have opened up drug rehab centers. But in Evillea, there's the State Department of Health that has the Behavioral. Crisis Center. And that is where. Anyone with mental health issues, drug issues, they can go there and then they get the, the help they need and then they move on to another shelter. Okay, and that's right in Evillea. And so Evillea actually is. There's a lot of shelters that are gonna be built. In Evillea, so the First Hawaiian Bank is in Evillea. The city purchased a property, a warehouse, uh, in Evillea. We're gonna build one hundred beds there inside of the shelter, I mean, inside of the warehouse. The state. Has a lot there that they're gonna put seventy-three. Kahale units. In that property, that's their property. John Mizuno is tasked with building all of the Kahalas across the state, so he might be on Maui, that's, that's. And he's trying to, he's trying to help the other neighbor islands as well, so obviously the most of the homeless are here on Oahu, but. You know, the money is for the entire state, so he's working on projects on every island, but Honolulu will get the bulk of it. Um. We are also, I'll, I'll, I'll just leave with one, one thing, um. The mayor, every Tuesday. We have a meeting with the mayor and not just me. But. HPD is gonna be in that meeting. We've been doing this, uh, you know. All the leaders who are in the cabinet, certain leaders are in this meeting because we discuss about how we gotta move forward. With homeless. The mayor is very aware. Because he sees it all the time and he tells us and he tells Core, the Core boss, not him, the one above him. To, let's get our act together. So I can literally say that the mayor is very serious on tackling this issue. Okay, but in my purview, it's about building more shelters because we, we gotta get them in there. In, in order to get them off the street, they gotta go someplace, right? Either they either can go to the emergency room and spend millions of dollars when they can just go to the medical respite and we can save some money over there, so that's the kind of. You know, that's what we're going through right now. Um. You're gonna see a, a lot more shelters spread out. In other neighborhoods. West. Up, I'm gonna do one on the Windward, um, on the Yani coast. Um, they did one in Kaniohi. Um, and they also did one by Middle Street, all these little Kahalas, and we're looking for other places where we have city properties that, that we can put those, um, tiny units. So. I'll take any questions. Wait. You laugh. There you go. Let, let me get through these.
Yeah. Stand up there.
I actually have two questions, but very quickly, um. There are, as you say, there are all different flavors and I can imagine that some of them, the, especially like the drug addicted ones, may not want to go to that behavioral. Facility, so what happens with them, that's one. The other one is that. Currently, we do have shelters, but I've heard that some of the people just don't want to go to. There because they have a dog or for whatever reason, so if we're building more, but they don't wanna go. You know, what's the point?
Those, not all shelters will take dogs, but there are shelters that will take animals. And the one at, um, First Hawaiian Bank, we have little cages, you know, for. For the, the, the dogs and the, the pets, so not everyone, but there are. Um. With the, um, the ones that don't wanna go. Well, the governor signed a. A bill. That, um, allows. Our. HPD unit and they gotta be trained in it. Uh. To use what is called a MH1. And. That. I don't wanna get too deep into it because it's just, you know, I mean. HPD, HPD is working on, on that, but. If they see someone. Unable to. Take care of themselves, they stay on the sidewalk and they just, you know. You have all the feces. There's, there is an ability for our HPD officers. To take them and take them to that one location. The Behavioral Health Crisis Center in Evillea. Yeah, they, oh, well, I don't know about how much time, but once they get dropped off, they, 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 they do what they gotta do in order to keep them there. And until they, you know, they get out of their state of mind and they can kind of work them up because also in that building. Are apartment units at the top, so the ground floor is kind of more medical. Right, and again. The purpose of that was not, was not to inundate the emergency rooms at all of the hospitals because that was a big problem. And so now we, we've have, we have an answer. It's gonna start soon because they need, uh, the officers need training. In order to. Do that type of work. And so I did see one that was actually right next door to First Hawaiian Bank. Are you guys there? Yeah, so this one lady right there. The husband is like, he comes to us and he's like, always, well, I was working on that property. Uh, getting everything set up and I saw this one lady who was sitting there and she was just, you know, feet, feces all over, she didn't wanna come to this, um. You know, shelter. Cleaning and then eventually. Everything came, came together and they were able, uh, they were able to remove, remove her and put her into a good shelter.
Yeah, anybody, wait, anybody in the board have any questions? Okay, now, I saw. Hey.
Go ahead.
Two minutes left.
Right, I've got quick question, two quick questions. Can you remind us what Core stands for and? And can you tell us whom to contact if we have people that we think should be referred?
So the number is seven, six, eight, C O R E, crisis outreach. Oh, we got cards, how's that? We're gonna give out the cards. Cards. Yeah, so just, um, they're, they're based out in, you know, downtown Honolulu and they'll deploy. You know, they, they get the calls, so they'll always deploy out and, and they'll go out and. Be one-on-one, well, not one-on-one, but one-on-three to. To help them.
Sure.
Yeah, he, he'll, he'll come up, yeah.
Okay, um, rookie?
Hi, Mr. Moku. Yeah.
Hello.
So I understand your purview is kind of the shelter, the shelter system. So who's responsible at the city for kind of? Affordable housing because? And how do you coordinate? Because obviously a shelter is ultimately a temporary. Living situation and for people who are houseless, they can't remain there forever and.
Right.
You know, they need to go somewhere else at some point, so that was my first question and my second question is more about the coordination of all the different shelter providers. Uh, because Partners in Care. Compiles the vacancy grid. But are the new Kahale that are being stood up, are those numbers or are those shelter numbers being reflected in a single? Sort of database somewhere that's accessible? Because I think. You know, the common response from members of the public is that, oh, there are so many shelter vacancies, why don't people go to them? But I'm on the webpage right now of Partners in Care and there are twenty-two vacancies tonight, right, at this moment, right, twenty-two vacancies and there are two thousand four hundred. Unsheltered, houseless folks, that's less than one percent that could be housed. So. It's really important that the data be published and available to the public and I guess I'm wondering. Are you making efforts to kind of ensure that there's accurate data that's available and then the affordable housing piece? Those are sort of the two questions. Thank you.
Good questions. Thank you, Wookiee. Um, our, uh, housing. Director Denise Matsubara, Sari, Sari Denise Matsubara. Um, she, she is our housing director and, um. I'm not su, I'm not sure what's in the queue on, as far as affordable housing, but I totally understand that, you know, when you, when you build these shelters, the little Kahalas, they, they gotta, it has to be a flow, right? You enter, you get what you need, you gotta move to the next, the next step so that we can open that bed for the next homeless person, so it's, it's this inflow-outflow and so eventually. Uh, I'll give you an example, Waikiki Vista is a great example of how Catholic Charities has helped families, so on, on one floor. Families, there's three other floors that they graduate to in order to become, you know, get a, get a good job, make enough money in order to. Get permanent housing and the service providers, well, at least I know of Catholic charities are the ones that will find them those permanent housing apartments, homes. Whatever, so that's, that's just an example, but I understand what you're saying about getting more affordable housing units and Denise is the one that's in control of that. On your other point regarding the, um. Partners in Care, we had a meeting with, um, I had a meeting, myself, Anton Krucki had a meeting, Anton Krucki is the director of Department of Communities, Community Services and we are working on. A command center. That. Will encompass. Not just real-time beds of where they are, but it'll encompass pretty much. All of the beds. Which includes. State-run beds, city-run beds that may not be in the system. And all of the Kahalas. And so this is. We're kind of in a. Put-it-together mold right now, we're just trying to, um, we just had one presentation for Laura Thielen, um, a few days ago and we're gonna. Work on, um. Work on developing, developing it more, um, and so we are coming out, um, with a much better system that encompasses not just what. Partners in Care sees. But what's available globally on Oahu. This is just only for Oahu and this, I feel. Will be a big key to solving the homeless issue and getting them into shelters and getting them into. Housing.
Okay, next.
Many of. Other questions are very similar and I think I have. Questions that talk about what you're saying too. Everybody is, is really concerned and you do hear that there's. Vacancies, but I wanted to see the big picture of the vacancies, the amount of homeless you have and when you think of the homeless, all these social. They must have a data analysis, what the needs are, so what percentage of these. Uh, do not much go to shelters and have that other. And what type of services? Now, you talk about image, why, I think much of our concern are the people. Go quite fully. When we're just on our way here, I did see two wood, like, red flags out and what they had come for was this person who was, uh, in the middle of the road and he had found rubbish. found rubbish and put on a wagon, I think, and yelling to his job to get on there, he wouldn't go there. But um you know, how bad do they have to be? Like, what history do they have to have? They build feces or whatever, or something like the social worker or whatever, work with their group image one to put them into so-called people. What is the process?
That's a good question. Cause I'm not, I I I'm not aware of what the qualifications are for the MH one. Cause it is, it just basically came out. So, yeah, I'm I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
With what you had asking now. I live in Houston too and I see a deterioration of the plate. Okay, I'm not saying uh, you know, and stigmatizing certain people. However, the uh, in three years, my cars were broken in different parts, okay? And we do have videos and we do have a picture from our condo of these people. Nothing was done. And I wasn't the only one in my uh condo. So everybody's thinking of putting up gate security things, right? Which costs for and um, not only that, but when I drive on the street and go up uh wherever I have to go uh, many of them don't follow the law. Yeah, and so they are using their bike to party whenever.
Wrap up your question.
Yeah, okay, so what are you doing?
I I can't do anything unless they're homeless, but I mean, if they're breaking the law, that that goes straight to HPD. Sorry, yeah. Okay.
So everybody has this urgent need that.
Well, let me, let me say this. I can tell you this. There's homeless in every community. Yes, 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 yes. No, I'm gonna tell you there is because just yesterday, the mayor found out about an encampment in Kahala. Okay, so there's homeless everywhere. It's not just in, you know. Yeah, I mean, not saying that's a good thing, but they're they're everywhere. So I know like everybody likes to, you know. Right, right. Cause you know where they stay? They stay under the bridge. They in the bridge, they under the bridge, they in the streets, right? Yeah, right. And they on Diamond Head. Right? Isn't that close enough to Kahala? Right?
Yeah.
And then who owns, who owns Diamond Head? The state, right? Yeah, so we get all the calls from Diamond Head. We get all the calls.
There's no shelter.
Right.
You know, in
And you know, on the the Haula La'ee side, they're all in the mountains. That's just, that's just how they, they run, you know, that's how they, they know, like, up to the, you know, in town. They like, they like live with.
Okay.
You know, I I don't know that answer.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know that answer.
Next.
You get that? Okay.
Joanne, you have something to say?
Or? Yeah.
Okay.
So thi- this question is for Mr. Moku. Thank you for coming out.
For love you guys, what you do.
So for the people that were, that were questioning, so Senate Bill three one three nine was, was the one that was passed into law. One already in place for years. It's just, it's it's changing the wording from something that already existed. Um, Behavior Health Center started, it opened back in March. Uh, we just never had really the, I guess, the vehicle to to get it working. So my question for Mr. Moku is, how will this new bill coincide with the Behavioral Health Crisis Center? Who will transport? There's only twenty-five units that were reported there. Is this a pilot program? I guess this is a state, so I know you're not gonna answer that. Uh, how long patients can stay? And then the new shelter, is it the one that's across the street from Core in Iberia? That the one you're talking about? Is it gonna be for families or just for adults?
Next. But I I think John, you can answer that one. Yeah, he can answer the the MH, MH one. Okay, John, I mean, uh, Joanne.
Two minutes.
Basically, I talked to, anyway. I talked to Sam Moku, the mayor's office and everybody, so you kind of know my concerns. I am a ninja because I'm sick and tired of being in my backyard. We can have a, you know, a a fair portion of them, but I think it's everybody's problem on the island, so everybody should have it in their backyard. But if you put it in Manoa, they're gonna be screaming us loud and, you know, and people listen. People don't seem to listen to us in what you knew. So that's what's getting pissed off because they should go in Manoa, they should be in Kahala, they should be in Hawaii. Put every place there. But I don't believe in this um Kahali, Kahali. Anyway, because I think you should put them in institutions by force, not by, you wanna go? Because they are causing problems to us. Nope. And that's us. You know, just because we have a house, does that mean it's a crime because we have a house? We should be also be able to go to the parks, enjoy the parks, can't even go to the park in uh Mo'ili'ili anymore. The stadium park is so filthy. I have an autoimmune problem. I ain't not going and going there. Plus that guy who used to be on the board, what's his name? Clifton, he got beaten up in there. You think I wanna get beaten up in there too? No. So when you, what you put in an area is what it becomes. And over and over, I say that. So put them in somebody else's area as well to let everybody have equal share. And not Wainai, Kalihii, Mo'ili'ili, put them in the other side, east side. I want them to yell too, because I heard that when Governor uh Green calls uh from, somebody calls from uh Portlock. Hey, Governor Green calls um and he tells the police, quickly go down to Port uh Portlock and get rid of the homeless. You think Governor Green has not answered my phone call in over a year? Cause I'm not from Portlock, okay? So that pisses me off a lot. And so I'm saying again, maybe if you put them into some kind of institution, it's much better. Where they are forced to, you cannot, you cannot ask people who need help, you wanna go? Cause they don't know they need help. They need to be forced. Like I always use the analogy of Helen Keller. If she didn't have Ann Sullivan, she would never have turned out to be what she was.
Okay, wrap it up.
So I'm just saying, give them, give everybody a shit. And plus, one more last thing, the Waikiki Vista, we could have used that for educational purposes. That was the Tokai University. Why can't our community have it as an educational area? Uh, maybe kids could go there for, to study, or we could go there for lessons for something else too. Why don't we have something for our community? Not just for this project. Okay.
Well, I, yeah, I'll just say that it's not just a homeless shelter, but the Royal Hawaiian Bank, that's their, that's where they are. So you guys can go over there enjoying. Yeah, you can join the, up to the culture with Clark Bright. That's their, that's their, that's their permanent home. And so they're, they're living with homeless families now. This is not homeless individuals. This one, this, the families get the cakeies, that's why, yeah. So that's, 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 that's what's happening.
Anybody else questions?
Uh, a couple of questions. What are the percentage of homeless coming from the bin?
That's a, that's, that's a good, that's a very, yeah, that's a very good question, very good question. Yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. Right. Talking to microphone.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, so COVID, yeah, they had a bunch of guys that they caught and they pretty much shut them back from what I've heard. And then as far as if they're from the mainland, can we? Can we send them, can we? Okay, okay, can we send them back?
So IHS has a program where we can send them back. Yeah, so I can, you know, no, yeah, 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 yeah. The the catch is somebody gotta be on the other side to receive them. So it's not like you just dropping them off and they going, you know, there's nobody at the other side. So that's, that's kind of the catch with with that one. Believe it or not, yeah. Believe it. Well, you know, I, yeah. We 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 gotta, we 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 got, we got, we gotta work on that, yeah.
So Tokai, um, is it gonna be family or is it gonna be adults?
Yeah, Tokai is only family, only family, yeah.
There any kind of numbers of increased prime or increased nuisance activity with that kind of with uh, with that kind of things happening in the shelters happening?
Uh, no, I I mean, a lot of these is probably like the ones that are sleeping on Coolidge, you know, they probably got jobs and stuff, so their bodies and then they get get to work, but they just need that little extra, you know, they was, they just like one paycheck away from you know, really falling apart, right? So that's, that's kind of what that shelter is, that shelter is for.
Okay, um, we're gonna move along here, yeah? Go ahead, John.
Uh, no, they don't pay to stay there. Eventually, well, so a part of, right, graduating to the next level is, yeah, they gotta they probably gonna have to pay rent. Not, not a big amount, but you know, they gotta get used to to that, right? We all pay mortgage, rent and everything. So they put them through that type of training, yeah, so that they can survive. We could, yeah, we could, cause we need them. We, I like, I'm gonna send, I'm gonna send the parks guys, go clean up that noodle. You, well, you tell me what park that is. Let's, oh, stadium park, oh, shucks. I know. Okay.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Good. Okay, thank you. If you guys got any more questions, just email, email me. I'll give you my email. Okay, Samuel dot Moku, M O K U at Honolulu dot gov. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You call him.
There you go. There you are, I can understand.
I'll find out. And uh, I just want to introduce my daughter, who's gonna go back to college. I told her to come tonight to get some civics. This is Ada Mokun.
Okay, I'd like to get the core guys up here to give them a quick five minutes. And go from there.
All right, um, thank you for um having me at the board meeting and stuff. My name is John Honolulu. I'm the field operations supervisor for Core. So Core is a community outreach, response and engagement program at city. Guys need um to contact our um program. You guys have our number and everything. So I'm gonna make um pretty much this, my speech a little bit short, so I know you guys have a lot of questions for me, stats and everything. But basically, our program is to go do outreach and engagement with the homeless people. So we try to talk them, build a relationship with them and try to get them off the streets and try to get them whatever, whatever resources, housing, um hook them up with, maybe getting into detox and trying to get them into some sort of shelter and some other program where they can be successful and be off the street. So that in the nutshell is basically our. So one of the questions is how many employees or staff I have? So we consist of about twenty-four staff members at this point in time. We have two, uh, one full-time nurse, one part-time nurse. We have two paramedics, one is me and one is my partner Judy. So we were from the nine-one-one side that transferred over here. We promotion. Um, and then we have fourteen EMTs and then we have another twelve our social workers. So it's about a team of thirty or so of that. We basically cover mostly the whole height. So everybody wants us in their neighborhood, they want us every day and stuff. So as Sam said, we're trying to build our um our own numbers up. So if you know anybody that needs a job, that's an EMT or a social worker, right? Um, send them my way. You know, everybody's short with staff. Um, so that's the numbers for our um, our staff. So that's pretty much the gist of my and I'll um let you guys come up and ask me questions. So it'll be a little bit, I know when you guys have a whole lot of questions.
Okay, anybody on the, Morgan has some.
Hello, thank you for coming. I had a couple of questions. First of all, I was wondering if you would kind of describe what your philosophy is. Um, what kind of principles undergird the work that you do and how it maybe has evolved over the years? And then, second of all, I'm curious what type of other institution or organizations you're involved with. It obviously homelessness is not a Hawaii problem. It's affecting the entire country right now. And I'm curious who you guys are in communication with about learning how to um tackle some of these challenges.
So our philosophy is to um humanely get people into shelters. And we try to do it with building or born, um, you know, developing a relationship with our clients. And we try to be successful with trying to build that relationship by trying to get them into like programs that will make them successful. So I know a couple of you guys was asking about, like, what do we do with them mentally ill or people who have drug abuse? If we just shove them in a shelter and just leave them there, they're probably gonna leave so far. So our C W is try to work with um like programs, like Salvation Army's detox program and those types of programs to kind of get them with try to get them into a better place, like B A T C, which is the Behavioral Health Center place. So we try to work with them to get these people there and they could stabilize the client and then we can move them on to the next area, which may be like transitional housing and so forth. Um, we've been, um, my boss Ian and Kathy has been to Oregon and Washington, Seattle, Washington. So it's kind of like the, I would say, epicenter of homelessness, but creating, creating gangster. So they've been there, they've kind of looked at their system and so we're kind of modeling their system here, but because of our culture. So we're adjusting it to ways, a little bit different.
Okay, anybody else on the board? Anybody else in the audience? Joanne has.
I know that. Joanne calls me every day.
Well, you have to go to, you have to go to the mic. Let's not fight here, I know. Come on now, let's.
Anyway, I'm calling you because what I was gonna say, she threw me off. Uh, let's see. You know what, my whole day.
Oh, come on. Three, two, one. Joanne, Joanne, Joanne. None of that.
I started.
I know you are going.
There are issues. I, if I could do it, I would help you in some way because, but I do have, I do go out, I do talk to some of these people and I said, where are you from? You know, cause I really wanna know where they're from. A lot of them are not from here. So I can, some of them, they're not in the right mind. I'm not going out there and be a Don Yim Zhang, okay? So maybe that's why I don't wanna really help, because what happened to Don Yim Zhang can happen to any of them. Eat your acid on. You think I wanna end up like that? That's why I asked for these things to fix up, because a lot of them have mental illness and it's, it's bad. It could be or the one, the guy who was at Walmart too, that was a homeless, one that was stabbed, that was a homeless. I don't want to become a victim. So I think that I have a right to go out and not be victimized. So I'm just telling you guys that maybe if you push a little hard, I live also in Texas part-time. Texas doesn't have this big issue. You have panhandlers, but you don't have a lot of tests. And I have been able to go to many parks, beautiful parks. What they do is they put them outskirts of Houston and they have like a community center. With the community center, they're all with their own type of people. So they, they have somebody to talk to who have the same issues. And that has seemed to work for Texas. Texas is one of the most successful states with homeless. Not the liberal states, I'm sorry, but Texas does have, I'm sorry, but Houston, if you look, if you look at the record, there are a lot of of red states that have been very successful and Houston is one of them. If you look on YouTube, you can see that. So they do have this area and a lot of them to get them to go to work, but they're in their own little community where they feel safe. I think that might be a good idea. Another one is putting them on a bus and taking them to various locations.
Okay, twenty seconds, wrap it up.
To work. So what about that? To cut grass and they pay them like whatever the minimum is, they use that money to pay us back. That's an idea too. So I'm coming up with an idea, idea, well, better than nothing, right? So I'm coming up with an idea, idea, well, better than nothing, right?
Thank you.
So great ideas, Joanne. Send that up, that's.
Anybody?
My degree. Um, so, one of, I know, um, you guys had a lot of questions about stats. So, um, how much people has come from? We had about seventy percent homelessness that we encounter.
Seventy.
Seventy. That is about. Yeah, so like about fifty percent. Yep. Of uh. Sharing population.
Yep.
As some sort of mental health.
Talking to the microphone.
Some sort of mental health issue is about fifty percent. Yeah, some sort. There's, yeah. Yeah, so. And that's. Yes. Yes. Oh, sorry. So the state saving money from that, well, because we're getting government funding. So how much of that money we're saving? Our end, how much money are they getting? How much money is? Getting people in. So I mean, we're just, I guess, homeless and job, because once somebody comes in, it's a state somehow. You have funding, right? You have funding to, you get, you have funding, right? But I don't know how this works, but there's money coming from somewhere, it's not the state, so government, uh, Green is working with. The Biden administration to get people, well, not in, but get funding for these people. So you got these funding, you've got this funding. But now. But also. By doing these kind of things, you save money rather than. Uh, I think he said, somebody says like eighty thousand dollars a year or two. To take care of. So. Might be actual money, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just, just asking weird questions now. Really good questions. So, um, our program right at this point, and we've only been around for three years. So that's how long it's been. So we were initially funded by federal grant. So we had to actually, or I should say, my bosses actually had to look at the grants. They had to apply for it. They got the grants. Now it's kind of switched over to. State money under the HUD. Urban Development. And hopefully with the data that for the last three years, it's gonna be pretty much state. Or city, I should say. So. With the people, I'm not sure if we're, how much money we're actually getting. But I can tell you that. You guys are paying. Those taxpayers are paying. So, and you guys are paying a lot, because it, to take care of one person with mental health illness for a year. It's over a hundred something thousand. So that's in, that's basically an average. So now we're talking about, you know, whatever. You know, if they're going to the hospital, their hospital stays, their ER visits, their, they get. Welfare money. EBT. So these are the stats that we have been collecting since February. And roughly in the Muliili area. So we go out maybe twice, depending on. If Betsy or Joanne calls me, maybe three times, three times a week. Um, roughly, we encountered thirty-six people. During every meet. From just the homeless people, yeah, just the homeless people.
Okay, we gotta wrap, we gotta start wrapping that up.
Out of thirty-six people, we probably get maybe four people every week to go into. So. Say that. Yeah, I mean, yeah. All I could, all I can say is there's a lot of money.
Alrighty, great. Thank you. Uh, one, we got. Quickly now.
I, I don't know if this is um, part of you in your purview, but. Uh, and I know you deal a lot with the behavior and whatnot, but sometimes what bothers me is not just the behavior, but the amount of. Stuff that they have. You know, it's like they're spreading out and they don't. If they took care of it, you know, threw their stuff in the trash as opposed to just leave it there. Is that something that you guys work with?
So we try. And that's the thing, is we try to. Have them clean up, or if they're not gonna come with us, we try to talk to them, our crew tries to talk to them, clean up. And throw away, throw away their rubbish. But all the time it works. And with the legal part is all that trash. That's technically their problem, so we have to get consent from them to first. And it becomes a legal thing with ACN.
Okay, we have. Wait, one second, uh, Morgan?
Just wanted to ask a clarification or a couple of clarifications, which is okay if you don't have for that um, number you gave about the percentage of people who are from the mainland. Do you know what percentage overall of the state population would be from the mainland, AKA like how that number compares to the um. Yeah, to the population of the state? And then I'm also curious to, um. Sorry, two other questions. One, when does someone come from the mainland? You know, is that any time in their life that they weren't born here? And then, um. Sorry, my other question would be, are you counting people who did not have housing when they came over here and are homeless or people who at any point, you know, they came over here, they had a job, they had housing, and then they became homeless?
Okay, so, um, the number that I got this from is from when we started in February. And so we collected, um, from the time we started collecting this data. Was approximately from now, so we encountered about forty-two thousand people. Since February. So of that forty-two thousand, so half. Is, um. And we may, um, this may be like, we encountering people over and over. Um, the percentage. Um, got dwindled down to about six thousand people, that's just different. Of that six thousand people. Um, that's where we got the fifty percent that has been of illness and then the about seventy percent keeping them. When we say mainland, it's somebody that was naturally not foreign. Now. We do get approximately about five to six people that usually come to our, our office area. Daily, I'm looking. So within like, uh, two to three weeks. So they're usually coming to our office and they're going to the rest of, because they're looking for services. So roughly around five, three to five people. Right off the plate. So usually, within one week, some, some, some days, it's like. Day number two. So, and I would like to say, I'm gonna tell you the truth. Some case manager from the mainland with them on a plane and sent. We've got that story multiple.
Okay, because we got Ian.
Thank you very much, Chair. Congratulations on the reelection. Um, so my question is related to Medicaid funds. So you mentioned emergency rooms, and one of the big expenditures related to homelessness is about a billion dollars a year, mostly through Medicaid. Funding healthcare services, the homeless emergency rooms. And emergency rooms, as someone who works at a federally qualified health center, are the most expensive and least effective when it comes to long-term health concerns. And it comes down to about a billion dollars. I'm wondering if your program at all receives any section eleven fifteen CMS waiver funding through Medicaid? Um, that's a service that some states like Vermont and New Hampshire have experimented a lot with, where instead of the money being spent in emergency rooms, they get access to huge portions. Uh, let's say one percent would be like ten million dollars to do preemptive health services, and as long as it actually defers people from emergency rooms, these pilot programs can be made permanent.
Uh, thanks for the, thanks for the question. Um, as far as I know, we don't have that, okay? Yeah. We don't have that program with us, so. Um, but I can check with, um. My bosses, but as far as I know, we don't have any Medicare, Medicaid. Funding.
Alright. Looks like that's about it. Okay, thank you. It's supposed to soon.
Just real fast, um, in your opinion, since you started this program, um, do you think that there's hope that we'll be able to solve this in the near future?
That is a good question. Okay, so, short story, we can. We have to change our mindset. Everybody. You want, um, me, this is not technically me as CORE. This is technically me as talking to you as a twenty-five-year-old medic on the city. We need to change our ideas and we need to change ways. The homeless people want resources. People give them food, water, everything. And we, or people feel that. That's what they want. So if they're out there getting resources, they're not gonna take my resources. Because they're getting more from you, from you. So if we start changing the mindset and we start, you know, basically also to legislature, changing laws, changing rules, that will help. And what we gotta do is also. Teach the children better. Because those people, homeless now, were children and maybe not supervised or anything like that, they're young. Be more responsible. And that's my personal stuff. Not technically from the city, I don't want to get scoldings, but it, it can, it can.
Okay, last question, Joanne. Yeah, quickie.
My cousin was a former, a homeless coordinator for Governor Hake, and he said giving off food doesn't help. Because it's like you go to Africa, you bring your sandwich, whatever, tomorrow, you have to see others sustain them, I'll take them, make their own. Yeah, yeah, right. Exactly that. And also, one thing I wanted to bring up was that you guys store their, um. Stuff. Anyway, stuff into storage, right? And then they are supposed to pay for it, right, to get it out?
So that would be, um, Department of Facility Maintenance. And so when they do the, the so-called sweep, they have to collect everything. So when I was saying that, we, we can't just take stuff. So when they do the sweep, they actually have to pack everything. They have to tag it and they have to inventory it, and by rule is they have to hold it for forty-five days. And then wherever the person is, if they're in a shelter, whatever, then they get to clean it. But as far as I know, they don't pay for it.
Well, that's why it's supposed to, I have my car out, I need a stick with my car out, but I'm just wondering about. And I had to pay a hundred people dollars, plus I had to. Fifty dollars more for. Citation, but I went to court, so I got the citation worked out, but I still didn't get one. But then you can get the waiver, they said the homeless get a waiver, that they don't have to pay. If you have, you sign the waiver for hardship? Can I sign that?
Okay.
Yeah, what if I signed a waiver too? You see, why I get irritated is the. At their homeless, but a lot of them chose, you have to pick the drugs.
Okay.
That would be another one.
Next. It looks like that was it. Uh, there are three people here running for. A representative of the state of Hawaii. And you have Ian. I see one of you guys stand up. Ian? Stand up, please. Get those two guys there. And I, I don't think you guys know, I'm the third one. Okay, what's your name? Yeah.
Alright, thank you very much, Chair. Uh, Ian Ross, as you mentioned, Democratic candidate for State House District Twenty-three. Born, raised here in Hawaii. I grew up with a single mom on Kauai and been calling the heart of Honolulu home for the last twelve years. I work at the Y and I Coast Conference of Health Center as the Public Affairs Director. Worked at the Capitol for four years and in prior position as well as this current one, an advocate for public health, so eight years of legislative experience. Thank you very much.
And then. Check my shoulder. Well then. Would you like to say something?
Hi, was that on Jeno? Sorry, it's.
No, no, just. Who you are?
How's it going, guys? My name's Kika. Um, hey, pull this speech out of my pocket real quick. So I'm born and raised here on Oahu, um, grew up in Kailua. I joined the military right after nine eleven, served eight years, came home, met my wife at Mai Tais on a Monday night like you're supposed to. And, uh, been married, been married to Muiwiwi ever since. Uh, I work in social services, so for the last ten years I've actually been working with the homeless, that's why I'm familiar with these fine people over here and I love them, I love them so much. Uh, and I'm gonna go check out that family that's in Eisenberg, I'll put on my to-do list tomorrow. Um, public safety is my number one concern. I have a family with two small kids, uh, all, all the drama we're hearing about Stadium Park. We were just there yesterday, sign waving, some homeless people came into my coolers, they're trying to take my signs, and one of them actually tried to take one of the kids. Okay, I went and had to talk to them.
What is your name?
Oh, Ikaka, Olds, like Oldsmobile.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Okay, next. I'm busy, I go. Uh, next we have. Betsy.
Hello, okay. Um, good evening, everyone, and thank you so much. And I'm kind of a nuts and bolts kind of person when it comes to homelessness issues. And, um, my name is Betsy, I think I just said that, and I live on sixteen seventy Kalakaua. So it takes me about five minutes to walk from Kalakaua sixteen seventy to the intersection of South King and Kalakaua. That terrible place where they had like the enormous problems with the people living under the bridges. So, um, just a really short story, you know. I lived in Japan, Europe and the United States, especially here for three equal parts. And then I came back here about two years ago and I was shocked to find out what was happening at that intersection of Kalakaua and South King, especially because I don't have a car, I take the bus everywhere. So I see everything from real close up. Without a car, you walk everywhere, right? So because of, you know, how upset I was, and kudos to that gentleman who, you know, who took, you know, things in his own hands. Um, I've been writing to Senator Ed Case, Got Nishimoto, um, various other people, Kelvins. Um, I know John very well, thank you very much, and, um, and I got to know Paul Robotti in the last, um, a month and a half. So I kept on writing to these people saying that you have to do something regarding the stream. Number one, there should be state and federal laws that protect the cleanliness of the stream. And then when I contacted Ed Case, he several times wrote to me about six water infrastructure projects. That has passed the House of Representatives, and these are all water infrastructure projects that involve looking at the stream. The goal of this infrastructure project is to keep the water clean and to make it efficient and to make it so that it is clean, that no obstruction from. Water storm or any of that. So I also, um, contacted my friend at the Board of Water Supply, Kathleen. And she contacted the people to try to see if we can get the water tested out. So I don't know if you folks saw the news like five or six days ago. That they not started a massive cleanup at that bridge, there were eight truckloads of rubbish, and that is basically because I complained so much. No, seriously, so you folks, I mean, never underestimate your complaints, especially what we're talking about now. Because, you know, I made a joke to Paul, you know Helen of Troy, the legend, the, the person who launched a thousand. Joking. Name is Betsy Koma, I launched eight rubbish trucks, so, you know, but it took eight rubbish trucks. And it was consistently, you know, I, I timed the time from I noticed this problem to them cleaning it up. It took about fifty days, that's less than two months. And why was I effective? Because I was consistent, I, I rate all the points in a consistent and professional manner, and I provided photograph evidence. And I tried to present myself and present the facts without going, becoming too emotional. But it's hard to, and another thing is that the point in time, there was a census made point in time, and John would know about this. That basically is like a head count of how many homeless people there are, okay, throughout the state of Hawaii. Now, comparing this year and last year, the point in time census, you know, done by a UH person, found that the area of Makali Moiliili had the highest number of increase. So we sitting here have the right reason to be extremely upset about the fact that we have the. So we sitting here have the right reason to be extremely upset about the fact that we have the highest change, increase in the number of homeless compared to last year. And then I think one of the shocking things we heard from John is that seventy percent of the homeless are from the mainland. You know, this is, I'm actually really pissed off, to be quite frank, that John Mizuno is not here. I don't think it's anything to laugh at, that Johnny Zino is not here, understanding that he was appointed by Josh Green to be his number one person. And, you know, I think it's really important for Sam Moku and John Mizuno to understand that this seventy percent is so unfair on us. We already have issues with, you know, the, the Kanakas, you know, like leaving for the mainland and everything. And so why should we bear the brunt of this? So I think this needs to be like an urgent thing. And I'm kind of surprised that Governor Josh Green has not approached this. And I really encourage you to supply Josh Green and Mr. John Mizuno and Sam Moku with statistics and say that this is no longer funny. I don't think there's anything funny about this. You know, and then so another thing, what I was thinking is that I've been in dialogue with Paul for a while and with, um, Logan Hutchinson, who's, um, he's not here tonight, but we've been going back and forth. And also Andrew is, um, is one of the staff under Calvin's office. So we all three agree that we need to create, well, I wanted to create a resolution on keeping the stream clean. Because thankfully, the five days ago, and this was covered by Hawaiian News Now, like I said, there were eight truckloads of rubbish. And we all had the discussion that the HPD told us that it's easier to have the homeless leave if we put signs on it saying no trespassing.
Okay, we're gonna have to wrap it up.
Sure, so the signs say no trespassing and it says state property. So it's not property, it's easier for, um, the homeless to be removed. So I'm proposing, along with everyone, and Paul is on the same boat, to create a resolution, whereas we're going to explain that to keep that area clean and other places, other bridges and other streams where the homeless are, we need to create a resolution that's going to point out that water safety is extremely important. The homeless are causing staggering amounts of pollution and toxicity and, and contaminants in our stream. That's what I'm proposing today. And that's what Paul and I, yeah. So that's what I wanted to say.
Wait, 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 wait. Okay, no, 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 that's right. Okay.
Oh, yeah, here are photographs, I forgot.
Okay, anybody aboard have any questions for Betsy?
Yeah, those are some of the pictures.
Are we voting on this resolution tonight?
No, I'm just, you know, I'm suggesting, I'm opening, I'm, you know, proposing and, you know, Kathleen from the, um, Board of Water Supply, she did some of the skeleton resolution. You know, it's like technical, it goes whereas, 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 and then we conclude. So I already basically wrote all the details. Should be in the resolution. Paul has that, Logan has that, a lot of people already have the meat.
Does anybody have any questions for Betsy? Got one for, of course, Joanne. Okay, you have to be at the microphone, or John. Okay. That's it there, that's, okay, um, do you have a question back there? There you go.
Just getting ready, politics, the three people just smoking, running for the same district or different? So you're competing with one another. So our, so as a voter, I'm good, I have one of you three.
There's a fourth one also.
There's a fourth. And the district is this, all right, that's cool. And then finally, backtracking to the count for the directorship of this organization.
Chair.
Chair. Uh, Paul, I know from being here a couple of times, I like him a lot, he's down to, down-to-earth, common sense school. Uh, I don't know Morgan, Morgans, Morg- Morgan seems to want it. Paul, do you want to be incumbent? Do you want to do it again?
We'll find out next month.
Do you, I'm asking you. Okay.
Okay. Any more questions for Betsy? Yeah, we might as well, we hit that.
So I just wanted to say thank you to Betsy. So four months ago, I filmed a video on that stream during the heavy rains and all the effluent was coming downstream. So we sent this video up all to our powers that be and they didn't do anything about it. So me and a couple of the boys that lived down on that end, we jumped in and we actually started to pull that stuff out because there's no catch mechanism that takes this stuff right out to the ocean. So I don't know if anybody in here, including Core, has actually been in that tunnel. So you can get in there. I've done outreach in that tunnel. It goes in. It's full of stuff. So, you know, I, I appreciate this resolution, hopefully we can get it going next time, but I support what you do. Thank you for bringing it up. And thank you for, for bringing all this video evidence. It's always important to be the squeaky wheel so that we can get things done.
I will have to see for a while. She would let it go, she did amazing job.
I mean, that's persistent, yeah. Oh, okay, any, any question? Um, you know, and also I wanted to make it clear that I want to leave the, the actual like running of the resolution to the board. So that's why I'm presenting tonight as like a proposal for you guys to take on writing of the resolution. I'll be around, but I mean, this, I don't want this to be my full-time job because I have so, you know, I mean, I hope, I hope you guys, yeah.
Betsy, who would you say was the ultimate, like, point person for the stream? Like, if we were gonna put, um, pass this resolution and we wanted to be like, we want to enforce this, was there a particular level of government that you felt like they're the ones that really own it?
And You know what, I have to be honest, um, I was really glad to talk to Paul because he was just as angry as I was. Everyone else is like, yeah, we know about the problem, blah, blah. Paul, actually, you know, there was meat to his like frustration and anger. So he was, he was really good. The only problem that we have, and it's not a problem, it's a challenge, we just, and Kathy, Kathy's really good on the Board of Water Supply. And also, um, contact Andrew, Andrew, his eye, he's under Calvin's office. So between then, we can get like the vocabulary of writing the resolution and I can send you the skeleton that Kathy started. It goes, um, resolution, blah, 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 whereas, 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 and on the bottom, it's like we conclude or whatever the, the, you know, whatever language it's used. So would you, would you be willing to write a resolution for help?
So because our board also includes, uh, the east side, can we also include in our resolution the Palolo Stream and the Houston Gulch? The Houston Gulch actually has a fence that blocks effluent from getting to Marco Polo. But the Palolo Valley Stream doesn't. In the beginning of July, we pulled out six mopeds from underneath that, that bridge. So if we can include it, we'll, we'll
With that, and, um, I highly, I highly encourage you to communicate this to Ed Case. Because Ed Casey was the one who wrote several letters back to me saying that this is important because it also affects this water infrastructure project that all the way goes to federal. So I would, I would use that too. And eventually, this can also be used, you know, throughout all the islands, not just on Oahu, because there is three hundred and sixty streams throughout Hawaii. And who knows how many bridges and how many mopeds are stuck.
Okay, we got, excuse me, Joanne? Joanne, just to let you know, this is your last term.
Yeah, I'm interested in chastity, that's fine. But you know what, for this particular reason, I want to focus on this stream resolution. Because doing the screen is gonna hit on a lot of homeless because they're simultaneously tied.
Okay, last question.
So I was gonna add, um, right after that was cleared, I live on who came out of that, moved right across the street from me. And what I was really impressed by was Core and other groups, I believe, reached out and there was a sweep and a follow-up within like forty-eight hours afterwards. And normally we hear about how people move from one spot and then a month later to another spot. I thought that was a really impressive, quick follow-up. But, uh, I wanted to add for the resolution, I used to be the bill drafter for the State House, um, Committee on Health and Human Services, which oversaw homelessness. I want to offer my help if you're at all interested in helping to craft a resolution. I've also written a number of resolutions for neighborhood boards in the past. I think you're doing great work here, happy to be of service.
I'm not a resolution writer, I'm just, you know, saying that I, I already wrote the, the meat. You know, we need, we need the skeleton, so yeah, I mean, just, I can get your email and forward you what I wrote and you guys can work it out once.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, though. We will rip the summaries for each. Okay, we're gonna postpone number H. And then, uh, as for Lindsay, uh, we'll postpone that one till next month also.
Is there some sort of like automatic process that happens if someone doesn't come for five times? So they just kind of remain on the board until? We see.
Okay, next, we're going with government administration, so with water supply. Thanks for coming, brother.
Hi, good evening, I'm Stephen with the Board of Water Supply and our, uh, for the McCully Neighborhood Board District, there were no main breaks to report in the month of, uh, July. And our announcement is to remind folks to come to our twenty twenty-four annual Unthirsty Plant Sale, which will be this Saturday. It's gonna be a whole lot of fun, we're gonna have, um, a bunch of zariskate plants, there's gonna be plants for sale, pre-soil conditioner, as well as a bunch of, um, succulents that you can check out. And you can go to our website for more, borderwatersupply.com slash plant cell. And right underneath that sign-in sheet, I have some flyers of regarding our plant sale, so hopefully you can come down and join us. So, yeah, that's my announcement, any questions?
Any questions for Board of Water Supply? Nobody?
Not very popular, just kidding, it's a good thing. Yeah, please come down. Oh, we do, okay.
I was just wondering if anything that you guys do is affected by any of the power outages that are happening right now?
Oh, for the P S P S? Yes, actually it is, most of our, um, facilities, um, or actually all of our facilities on that side are operated by Hawaiian Electric, we do have solar, but there's no battery power. So we actually started, um, an outreach event, which we are going out to the YNI Coast, it's a partnership with Hawaiian Electric and Elderly Affairs Division. And reaching out to the communities out there that will be affected by delivering water collapsible jugs and, um, making sure that we're prepared to give out information to those communities if it's needed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome. Oh, yeah. Do we offer lots for the commu- for regular? Oh, I'm not sure, yeah, yeah, maybe go down to the hardware store, they might be able to, um, and answer that question.
Okay, we gotta use the microphone, yes. Okay, if you don't use the microphone, we all, that's a neat question. Okay. Okay, thank you very
You're very welcome, thank you.
Uh, Michael O'Keefe, Mayor's Mayor's Representative, I don't believe Mike, no, Michael, he's on vacation. Uh, I saw Elmer over here, University of Hawaii.
There he is. Baby, everyone, sorry, good evening, everyone, I'm Elmer Kai, University of Hawaii, Monroe. Let me keep you short because you have a long, 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 long night. Um, you're gonna find that the traffic running is gonna increase, um, now because school starts in the week of August, the week of the nineteenth. Well, students will be coming in for the twentieth to the twenty-second into the dorms. We start on the twenty-sixth of August. We're also having, and I have my report up there, um, two volleyball events. Or three volleyball events in the month of August and two football events in August. Uh, the biggest one is one that lets you know is August thirty-first, that's against UCLA. So one o'clock, one thirteen afternoon game. Uh, by giving you forewarning because they usually draw a lot of folks because we do have a lot of alumni here that goes to UCLA. Um, I want to keep this short because the next month I did promise to kind of give you an all the facilities, apologies Laura, of all the projects we have, like, let me give you an update. There is, Laura has always asked about, uh, the entrance on the lower portion, we call Varsity Circle area. We actually do have funding for that, we're actually doing the planning to improve that area so that you walk in. I do have to share a little story about the main entrance, the, the big, um, uh, when you're going up on University Avenue, there is that cement Founders Gate, sorry, thank you very much. Um, we need to upgrade that simply because it's, it's been there for years and we just need to clean it, making sure it's really identified and, and market what it's for, because people just drive right by without understanding what it is. So we just wanted to improve. Um, what I want to do the next meeting is talk about, um, the area where University High a lot, a lot of questions have been asking what's, what's the plan for that, so I'll have that in the next meeting. But I'll leave it up to questions now, because I do know it's late.
Anybody have any questions? Nobody, okay, thank you very much.
Hello, good night, everyone.
Welcome home, brother. Okay, next we have Councilman Say, I don't know if, there he is. Governor, oh. Oh, sorry. Governor's Representative, sorry, I
Good evening. Um, my name is Matt Spont, I'm the Governor's Representative. Um, I apologize, I was not able to make it to the, uh, June meeting. Um, and in the interest of time, I do have one follow-up from the May meeting. I think it was Daisy Morai who asked a question about, um, the Department of Hawaiian Home Land's project at the old Boladrome site and what the status of that was, and I was able to check into that. Um, the project is intended to be rentals for Department of Hawaiian Homeland's beneficiaries. I think Daisy, you might have been under the impression that it was for senior housing, it is for DHHL beneficiaries. Um, right now, the developer that has been, um, awarded the project is putting together their financing and the design, um, they're gonna go for city permitting, uh, next. Uh, there's no set date for construction groundbreaking, uh, or construction completion, so it's still kind of in the design phase. So I hope that answers your question, Daisy, and I'd be happy to, um, take any questions that anybody has to follow up on for next month.
Uh, Chair, this is Daisy. Chair, this is Daisy. Can you hear me? Okay, thank you, Matt, for checking that out. No, I, I just said it was for the Hawaiian, um, home starters. But my question was, when will they start construction? That was my, uh, question. Because as you know, the, the homeless are starting to use that as their playground and, you know, it is affecting the community, so that was my question, when is the start date? Would appreciate it because I know Staffordly Carr has a lot of project with the Oloa Stadium, but that is very important too, thank you.
Sure, yeah, and unfortunately there's no, uh, groundbreaking date yet, um, the city still needs to permit the project.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
Um, are they able to provide some kind of security there, uh, until such time that they start construction?
Uh, I'm sure they are and I will check in on that and I hopefully can report back next month about what efforts they're taking, uh, to secure the, the building.
And the grounds around it, because that's where there seems to be more congregation of unwanted people.
Sure.
Okay, anybody else have any questions we haven't heard?
Just quickly, wanted to know about the parking meters that are gonna go in there, it's, we're afraid of the impact on the rest of the neighborhood. Already we're getting these cars coming and parking on our streets, Coolidge and likewise. Um, is it in concert with this project? Thank you.
Okay, I'm not certain what parking meters, uh, you're referring to.
They've got the stanchions out now. They've got the stanchions out now. We don't know what the date is that they're gonna put them in.
Okay. Okay, I will try to find.
We'd rather not have them there.
Anybody else with questions? Questions? No? Going once, twice? Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now back to next one is Calvin say.
Okay, Paul, I'm right here and you folks do have my report in the chat, but more importantly, I would like to ask Andrew maybe to respond to the last. Person that testified or questioned us about the parking meters on Eisenberg. I think Andrew's here on on the line. Andrew?
Hi, everyone. Andrew Councilmember says here. Yes, so the parking meters on Eisenberg were done from a constituent request in 2016. And actually was approved through Riser and. And that's why the installation of the meters are going up now. So it's just the the study was done in six years ago. And then now they're ready to install.
Okay, and then Paul, the next question was in regards to. Betsy's inquiry in regards to the King and Kalakaua. It was Andrew who initiated the conversation with the city administration also. And you know, for Betsy, the county of Oahu has many streams for District Five. We have to encompass the Palolo Stream that flows into the Alawa by Kimaki High School. Then you have the Manoa Stream and the Makiki Stream. So in trying to address all the concerns, we're trying our best in clearing the stream beds that we deal with in District Five. The next topic that was brought up earlier was in regards to the homeless and, you know. Is it a success? It is a success, but for for all of you, you know, they have a schedule in regards to cleaning of streams. And I wish we had more resources, when I say resources, funding to hire more teams to go out and clean the streams. If you go to the west side of Oahu, they were cleaning the streams in regards to all of the sand that and that came up by the ocean side and they're doing that. Plus other areas in the Hawaii Kai area, Wailupi Stream, etc. But it's endless. So all I'm saying is that they're trying to come up with a schedule of stream maintenance. But I'm really happy that Mr. Olds has stated for the record that they have gone out voluntarily, which I have done that in the Palolo Tree and the Manoa Stream. But any other questions that you may have, I'd be happy to respond. And in closing, Ms. Chastity Santiago will be replacing Andrew, who is going on to another higher position in the city administration.
Okay, we have one question for you.
Go right ahead.
Hi Kelvin, I addressed you last last meeting in June?
Yes.
Yeah, June. Okay, so progress report of what we talked about in June. I reported that there was vehicle issues being. Needed to be addressed on our street on Coolidge Street.
Yes.
You sent Andrew down to meet with me. I met with Andrew. I walked him around the. Down, down Makai towards towards Kapilani around the block up Eisenberg. Okay, we discussed, I showed him some of the vehicles that were parking excessively over 24 hours, which is the law. 24 hours after that, the vehicle is eligible to be cited. And you know, so so let's talk about what I talked about with Andrew. There's a food truck in front of 728 Coolidge Street that has been there. There's a food truck attached to a Chevy S10 pickup truck that's been stuck there. I spoke to abandoned vehicles and they said that they are unable to tow the vehicle because it is attached by trailer to the truck. So there there's a liability issue. My thing is if that car was parked in Hawaii Kai or Kahala, I guarantee you with enough people screaming down there, your guys next, that car would be gone. That truck has been there for over two months and nothing's getting done. Okay? There's also a food truck on the corner of Eisenberg and South King Street, right in front of the baseball park. It's been there for, I don't know how long, probably over a year now. It's been sitting there and nothing's getting done. We bought that up with numerous, you know, entities and nothing's getting done there. The other one is we talked to Andrew about red curb being painted in front of the house of 2374 Date Street. Okay, so that was two months ago. I bought that up. Nothing got done there. I've been getting emails back and forth through the time. Okay, I also got an email, a token email. Hi, my name is Chastity. I'm running. I'm so happy to run for office. I sent her pictures of the truck. I sent her pictures of the red curb. Nothing got done. I didn't even receive a response from Chastity, not nothing. I didn't receive nothing to this day and nothing's still getting done. Okay? So I want to know what is it gonna take for you guys to do something? He speaks up. We need to be heard and you guys are just turning a blind eye or saying, hey, it's the other guy's job to do that. Because we keep we keep calling the cops, we keep calling abandoned vehicles line. And when we come home from work, we have to battle for parking. The red curb issue going on on Date Street, that house right there painted the curbs. They're not even supposed to paint the curbs. Okay? They painted the curbs. I've watched cars getting ticketed because the car that's parking in front of that red, that red painting, they're pulling up forward past that. And then the car in front of them is parking closer to the crosswalk. So they're getting tagged. And nothing, nobody's tagging the house, the owner of that house that painted that curb. So what are you guys doing about it?
Well, let me just say this. We'll go and check with HPD. That's the enforcement.
I heard all that already. I heard all that. You guys aren't doing anything. Okay?
I apologize.
What are you guys doing? I want to know what you guys are doing and how you guys are gonna remedy this because I don't want to wait months before you guys doing it. And I'm still battling for parking on my street.
Well, I think parking is just, well, parking is gonna get worse as we progress into the future.
Of course, because six years ago, you guys decided to just to just go ahead and decide, hey, we need to put parking meters over here. And you guys are gonna push all those parking issues into our street. That truck that's parked on Coolidge Street right now in front of 728 Coolidge Street, I repeat, 728 Coolidge Street. Has been was parked on Eisenberg in front of Stadium Park. It got moved over to our street and it's been there ever since.
Okay, got it. We'll get back to you by next month. I apologize.
Hi, sorry, just just one one thing. Yeah, this is Andrew Councilmember says again. Yeah, you know, as far as the red curbing, I did put in the request to Department of Facility Maintenance. And they did say that there was a work order that's in process and there's one team that that handles the whole island. So I'm just hoping that the queue can get there soon, but I'll talk to Chastity and have her follow up to see if there's a timeline for that.
Okay, Paul, go right ahead.
Thank you. Next.
So following up on the previous speaker, which is a hard act to follow, I'll admit. I've spoken to. And you know, if you've ever walked by Coolidge, you're probably familiar with the Kipuna couple that always entertaining people there. They had mentioned that specific abandoned truck has actually had notices of abandonment on there and the owner comes by and just throws it away. So we know someone's regularly visiting it, which I think is somewhat more frustrating. But I have another question for the council member. We collaborated previously near the Luna Lilo on ramp. There was a development that got stalled and is about five stories. It wasn't filled in. And there was a number of people experiencing homelessness moving into the structure. And the neighbors would call 911. And of course, they couldn't report trespassing because it wasn't their property. At that time, you had mentioned there was some sort of form. It was you or Janelle. So forgive me if it hadn't been you. That there was a form that could be filled out, which would grant neighbors the ability to call for trespassing. Because as it stands, abandoned homes or when people are gone for a time, or there's a development, so no one's there. 911 can't really be activated because there's no one there to report the trespassing who's a property owner. But you could let the neighbors under certain circumstances do it. Could you tell me what form that is? It's come up in some previous conversations.
I can't recall the form.
Sorry, Ian, this is Janelle from Councilmember Say's office. It's not a form. It's some sort of legal agreement that you and the property owner would need to go into to give you proxy to be able to. To call the HPD and have them removed from the site. So it's not, it's not anything through the city.
Is that something legal aid potentially help with?
I believe so. They could probably assist in that.
Thanks. They can leave it there. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Hey, we have to quick because we only have 20 minutes.
Hi, Sally Sinigan. I'm not sure if you're the right person that I need to ask, but it looks like that we need to take our community back ourselves. So I'm wondering if there's any kind of liability issue, say for what my neighbor here did and went into the stream. Is there a problem with us picking up trash or, you know, doing the same things? And is there a number that we can call to get that help, to get that dumpster or any kind of other resources that can help the community if we so desire to? Get our hands dirty and take care of stuff ourselves.
Yes, we could. And that will be with the Department of, I believe, Facilities Maintenance. And it will take about a year in scheduling it because we do have a division that does this type of nonprofits. And they'll probably work, walk us through the process in regards to signing off on papers as far as liability. We've done it in Palolo Stream. We've done it by the area where we have Pohua Ridge. There's a stream there. And we've been very fortunate in trying to maintain a lot of the bridges and stream beds that we have in the District Five.
So if we don't want to wait for a year, we could be liable for something if we wanted to just clean it out ourselves?
Something was to happen to one of the volunteers or participants. Yeah, that organization may be held liable. Or the city may be held liable. And that's not fair. We've asked that this should be brought up at the state legislature in regards to immunity from these type of incidents, which is volunteerism.
But that's like Good Samaritan law or something like that.
Correct. And that's where it's been very difficult. But let me have your get down, let me have your name and then we can work on it as far as what you want to do. And in October, we'll be doing one in Palolo Valley next to the Palolo Housing and cleaning up that particular stream. So you know, there's a lot of different streams that we are trying to clean and get it back to what it is. And it's been a difficult task because of the shortage of our employees. I'm not gonna fuck anybody.
What if it's not a stream? What if it's just like a park or something like that?
Park, we could go and address it with Department of Parks and Recreation and they've helped us clean other parks in the district that I do represent.
So we always have to do it in conjunction with a government entity. We can't just do it on our own.
Right. Because you have to get some approval from some government agency and it's gonna be mostly the city and sometimes if it's state lands the state. I'm sorry.
Okay. Got a question for you in the back. Go quick though.
Evening, Councilman Say.
I, good evening.
How's that on go? Hey, just a quick question. So we, a couple of months ago, Andrew and I were able to. Yes, but according to Andrew, we were only allowed to do a certain areas of the stream that were congruent with the addresses on that street. You know, if we're already gonna get the bodies and the machinery into this area, isn't it not just easier to just clean out the entire parcel? Basically from Date Street all the way down to Kapilani. Instead of having to call for each landlord to call in and be like, hey, I want this to be serviced. And even then it was like a seven or eight month waiting list that was just penciled in. It wasn't even guaranteed.
You know, the problem we're having is that the stream is, you know, broken up by private landowners adjacent to the stream. A very good case in point is like Manoa and Palolo Valley. You've got to get the okay from the residents that are abiding the stream that is the stream that we wanted to clean. And that's the problem I'm having is trying to get.
Is it possible for us, for the city to be able to move to initiate the stream cleaning and getting in contact with the landlords? Because most of those places that are along that stream and Kapilani are rentals. So the landlords don't even live on the property.
We could do it that way with the association that is tied to the apartments. You're correct.
If it's possible, I mean, that would be awesome. Yeah, thank you for your service there.
Be happy to be a part of the cleanup, which we've had all these years.
I think we have one last question for you.
Go right ahead.
Will be a quick question.
Hey Calvin, this is Joanne. When is your term ending?
December.
Okay, by then, you think that you can get some people to come out to our area and evaluate what needs to be done? What we've all been complaining? I think a lot of us, Merle, Betsy, me, we're getting frustrated because we call and call and we spend a lot of time doing this. I don't have to go out there because I pay you guys to do that. I didn't bother. I'm not, I'm not in government. And I call you to help. But then I have to call so many times for the same issue. That's what's making us all frustrated. And then when we hear somebody Kahala calls it, you guys go out there right away. So why can't you get somebody to evaluate our community? I mean, I've been complaining about what Merle complaining about Betsy and get some kind of plan that you're gonna give us. Because we don't have anything. And then I've called Representative Scott Nishimoto, who's maybe gonna be into, gonna be voted into your position. Which I have called him for years. He doesn't even answer the phone. So hopefully he doesn't get into your position. But anyway, I'm just saying that we need to get some kind of plan. Give us a plan of one timing. Timestamp, when are you gonna do this? When are you gonna do that? Put an easement so we can have a walkway. What about the parking? What about the signs? We cannot, you know, I call Andy Sugg, the mayor's right hand man. He came down my street, but it's the same. And then I said, do you have a solution? Not yet.
Okay, Joanne, what?
Ten years. It's been 10 years.
Okay, I realize that. And we'll, I'll follow up, but if I was to make a request to an agency to do the plans or the study. I would probably look at the University of Hawaii Urban Planning Department. Okay, and then secondly, for all of you here this evening, thank you very much for your attendance. And I would like to invite you, like to invite you on August 12th. At Kimaki High School Auditorium from 6:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. For a public hearing on the District of the City Council, District Five, on the Oahu Plan and the Development Plans. It is very important that you folks be there in attendance to see what the plans will be for the future of District Five. Which encompasses five house districts. I shared it with the board earlier about District Five encompassing Palolo Valley, Kapuulu, Kimaki. St. Louis Heights, Moiliili Makali, Manoa, Makiki Tanlis, Alamoana Kakaoko. Five house districts. And I really want you folks to be out there because I like to have your input. How far back would you guys want to see a setback in regards to more businesses in the residential zone areas, etc.? Business use, residential mixed use. Those are the type of issues that I'd like to get your input in this particular plan. That was developed by the Department of Planning and Permitting. Okay, Paul, anything else?
Anybody else?
August 12th, 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Next, we have Representative Andrew Garrett.
Yes, good evening, Chair and members of the community. I know you folks are running tight on time, so just wanted to congratulate the officers and thank you for folks for your service through next summer. I just dropped my summer newsletter link into the chat box for those of you folks who are online. And I'll just stop there and see if there are any questions today. Thank you.
We got one question for him.
All right.
Hey, Representative Garrett, how are you? I never look for these things. Yes.
Hi there.
I just was curious. I have been reading different articles about school districts across the country that are banning cell phones. And I don't know what type of conversation that just happens within a DOE context. Or if that happens at a legislature point, but I didn't know what conversations you were aware of. With regards to something like that happening or any type of limitations being placed on how they're used in schools right now.
Right. No, thanks for the question. I believe that falls under the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. They set the policy that the schools have to follow. Sorry, my neighbor's dog is going nuts right now, but there are times where the legislature will intervene if it's, you know, things like curriculum that we feel that the board is not emphasizing or whatnot. But typically, we try to defer to the Board of Education to set policy like that. I did see that article as well too about cell phones and, you know, the media pressures of social media and all the distractions it can cause. So I was planning on following up with the Department of Education on that. So we may have read the same article, but thanks for the question, Morgan.
Yeah, if you do follow up, it would be great. And even just telling us who we should maybe invite in for a meeting would also be interesting. Because yeah, I thought it was interesting that LA School District has banned them. And now I know New York State is looking to ban them. I think that's why I wanted to bring this up is because I saw that New York State was trying to do that as opposed to just a smaller school district.
Right. Okay, thanks for the question. Hopefully I have an update by next month.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Scott Nishimoto.
Thank you. Good evening, board. First, just one update, the going green recycling project.
The going green recycling projects are some of the most popular events that get done in our community. And there's one upcoming on August 17 at the deaf and blind school. I'll have my staff put in the information into the chat. Other than that, I'm available for questions.
Any questions? Questions? Are we questioned out? Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Representative Adrian Tam.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, members of the board and members of the audience. I'm gonna keep my report short. I just want to thank everyone for coming out to support our school supply drive that benefits Alawai Elementary School. And I'll open it up to any questions that you may have for me.
Okay, questions? No, I don't think they have any for you. Thank you very much for coming. Okay, Les Ihara told me he couldn't be here. As did Carol Fukunaga. The only one is Sharon or O'Paki. Is she here?
Aloha, Charles Izumoto, on behalf of Senator Marawaki. I can take any questions that you have. You have a report in the chat.
Anybody have anything for Senator Fukunaga? Excuse me, Marawaki.
Marawaki. Thank you.
No? Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Any 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 brief mention of items that we did not cover on this agenda? Brief. And we're gonna give you one minute.
Couple of quick things. First of all, people need to know that the stream that used to be called the Houston Ditch is called the Alanaio. I got it renamed back to its original name. And that some people are kind of fuzzy as to where streams are and where they go and what their origins are. I think that would be a good idea for people to understand that. Second of all, DTS Complete Streets is basically MIA and what they're doing regarding that unfortunate proposal for the bridge. They do not answer any of our very thoughtful written questions and comments. And they are probably just waiting for us as community members to die out or to fatigue and not come back again. This is shameful business because they're supposed to be representing us. So I would like, if anybody wants any more written communication, I've sent it to some of the board members. I could send it to others if you want. I'll give you my email address and you can get it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. One minute now.
I also spoke to Chastity under Calvin Say's council about this derelict building. It's called the Kalakapi Apartment Hotel. It's a complete derelict apartment hotel that's two buildings down from Century Center on Kalakaua when you're walking towards South King. That derelict building has been like that for over 10, 11 years. And there is two really busted up cars parked right in front of the building. I spoke to Senator Representative Tam in a different district, and he said that he already saw violations. And that building was of extra concern because there is like a building across the street that was busted for illegal gaming. And there was murder there. So we're afraid, at least I'm afraid, that a dilapidated building like that, you never know what kind of activities are in there. So Chastity promised to to check it out and send inspectors there. So it'd be really lovely to hear from her about their update. Thank you.
Right on time. Anybody else? Anybody? One more right there.
So in light of that recent moped fatality that just happened. So a few years ago, we almost got into a big accident on Kapialani going westbound, where a baseball game was finishing up at Alawai Park. We were crossing during rush hour. And because that left lane gets backed up for people going into Waikiki, they walked into the middle lane. The guy swerved into me. I swerved almost into the bus stop at Paani. And thankfully, no one was hurt. So I brought this up to Department of Transportation. I brought this up to other powers. The explanation is, oh, well, they're allowed to cross there. We used to have marked crosswalks with big signs. They took away all of that. And they did so because they want to deter people from using it, even though they're legally still allowed to. So to this day, two years later, those crosswalks are still blocked out. But there is no signs. And every single day that I drive on Kapialani, there's some close calls that happened. And now we have this fatality. So if the board can bring this up and talk about it, if the if anyone's still on, I can't tell on the screen here. No, it doesn't look like it. This is something that needs to be addressed. This is a safety issue. It doesn't take someone dying for it to happen.
Thank you very much. Nicole? One minute.
Hi. Okay, thank you. I'll be I'll be quick. Good evening, Chair, Board members, and neighborhood residents. My name is Nicole. And I'm a student leader with Serene at Kapialani Community College, also known as the Center for Resilient Neighborhoods. So thank you again for the opportunity to share. As many of you know, we've been working on supporting the development of an island-wide network of resilience hubs on Oahu. I wanted to share a quick update on this. We have completed the second of two planning meetings and are now getting ready for our official launch this month. We're excited to have some of you involved and are also happy to announce the new island-wide network and learning community will be coordinated by both Serene and the Lahui Foundation with Dr. Miku Lenantine and Adalina Posse helping support this community-led effort. So I'll just drop some links in the chat if anybody needs more information.
I think that I next time, send me a message. And we'll see if we get you on the agenda next time, and we could talk about that program.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Going once, twice? Okay, next. Next regular meeting, September 5. We'll take care of the things that we didn't take care of today. And future agenda items, if you want to, send them to me. I'll get you on there. Level broadcast on channel 49, 9:00 p.m., third Friday of the month. A bulky item pickup by appointment only. There's a phone number for it. And reporting neighborhood issues on a little 311 is the app. After that, we're adjourned.